Good evening and welcome. This is a public hearing of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Evanston. The zoning ordinance directs this body to hear applications for major variations, special uses, and appeals from decisions of the zoning administrator. Depending upon the type of matter, this board will either make a final recommendation -- or, I'm sorry, a final determination, or send its recommendation to the city council. Present tonight are board members Andrew Gallimore, Beth McLennan, Clara Weinberg. My name is Matt Rogers, and therefore we have a quorum. Also present from city staff tonight are Melissa Klotz and Ken Cox. This is a formal meeting, and there are rules that govern our proceedings. Most important, only one person speaks at a time to accurately record the proceedings. Anyone who wishes to address the board regarding any matter on the agenda will have the opportunity to do so at the appropriate time. Our normal procedure is to hear from staff on the documents on file. We will then receive testimony and other evidence from the applicant or appellant. After hearing from the applicant or appellate, any person with a legal interest in property located within 500 feet of the subject property may present evidence, reasonably question witnesses, or seek continuance of the hearing. Next, others who wish to make a statement regarding the matter may do so at that time. When all opposing testimony and other statements have been heard, the applicant or appellate will be given the opportunity for rebuttal or closing statement. All testimony will be under oath. Although we do not apply the strict rules of evidence, please limit your testimony or statement to your personal knowledge. When you testify or make a statement, please state your name and address, and be sure to sign up on the provided sign-in sheet. We are audio and video recorded in this space. Please make sure that you are at a microphone when asking questions or making statements so that you can be properly recorded. All proceedings are subject to broadcast at a later date. When all of the testimony, evidence, and statements have been received into the record, the board will close the record and begin its deliberations. We usually try to adjourn by 11 o'clock. Any matter not concluded at tonight's hearing will be continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting. We have four items on the agenda this evening. Is the applicant from 1231 Hinman present? From 419 Greenwood? 140 Chicago? Okay. Oh, that's right, it's being continued, I'm sorry. And 1111 Darrow. All right. The first matter on the agenda will be to approve our meeting minutes from October 1st. Does anyone have any comments or corrections to the minutes as drafted?
I do not.
Is there a motion to approve these minutes?
I move that for the minutes for the Tuesday, October 1st, meeting, that we approve them.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll note that Mr. Gallimore was not present at that meeting, and that is why he is not voting. I guess the first thing we should do tonight is to elect an acting chairperson. So at this point, I will take--
I move that we elect Matt Rogers as acting chair for the evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? With that, I will be acting as chairperson for this evening. I guess we'll go ahead and just begin with our first case for this evening, 1231 Hinman.
Jeffrey Epstein, property owner, applies for major zoning relief to construct a two-car detached garage. The applicant requests a building lot coverage of 36.3% where a maximum 30% is allowed, zoning code section 6827. Impervious surface coverage of 49.1% where a maximum 45% is allowed, zoning code section 68210A. A north side yard setback of 1.5 feet where a minimum three feet is required, zoning code section 6828C4. And a south side yard setback of 1.5 feet where a minimum three feet is required, zoning code section 6828C4. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are variance application submitted September 5th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated December 14th, 2012, site plans, elevations, neighbor approval, certificate of appropriateness approved at August 28th, 2013 Preservation Commission, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, Historic Preservation Commission draft meeting minutes excerpt from August 28th, 2013, and Spark meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2013. Additionally, there is a letter that has been passed around to the Zoning Board members at the beginning of this meeting that reiterates the approval of the neighbors directly to the north and south of the property. And also to note that at the October 2nd, 2013 Spark meeting, the applicant noted that much of the deck in the rear yard will be removed. With the updated site plan featuring a smaller deck, the zoning relief for impervious surface coverage is no longer requested as the property is compliant at 44%.
Thank you. At this point, if I could have anyone who wishes to testify or make statements in this matter sworn in, if you'd please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you. If you could go ahead and state your name and address.
My name is Jeffrey Epstein. The address is 1231 Hinman, and I'm here to petition the board for variance for both the north and south side setbacks, as well as the lot coverage. But I'm gathering from Melissa's statement that I'm no longer petitioning for impervious surface variance. I can tell you a little bit about the project.
Yes, if you would, please.
It's a recently purchased home. It's on a very, very small lot, perhaps the smallest, narrowest lot in South Evanston. I'm not that familiar with it, but currently, there's a one-car garage, fall-down one-car garage in the back, and I'm petitioning to build a small two-car garage. Two-car garages, generally speaking, are 24 feet wide, and the lot is 25 feet wide. So I'm petitioning to build a 22-foot wide, a minimally small two-car garage, which would require a variance of the side setbacks. And then because of the additional building lot coverage and impervious surface coverage, I've agreed to take down the decking, which is an impervious decking, in the back of the house. I don't think that building a garage poses a hardship to any of the neighbors or the neighborhood. You can see from the site plan and from the elevation, it's going to be in keeping with the nature of the neighborhood and the nature of the house. And I've gotten support from both neighbors on the north and side -- on both the north and south sides, and they've agreed to support the variation, and therefore, again, I don't think it's a hardship to the neighbors as well.
You're not showing any paths, Missouri?
The paths are going to be stone -- I mean, obviously, I haven't done a landscaping plan, a fully formed one. I actually could submit one if you wanted to, but it's not going to be a concrete path. It's going to be stone steppers to the back of the -- to the back of the garage.
And will there be some additional pervious or impervious surface in front of the doors that face your home, the sliding doors?
Yeah, those are like -- it's -- again, they're going to be bluestone steppers, or whatever you want to call those things.
So on the plan that we have, on the south side of the proposed garage, there is an existing garage for your neighbor. Is there anything on the north side, or is that--
There's a small detached fence.
Okay.
And the fence will be removed for construction and then replaced after the construction is over. It's a fence approximately four feet high, and it's not attached to the alley fence. It's just sort of a fence that sort of separates the garage from their yard. The neighbor to the north, there is no fencing between the two yards. It's just a natural shrub.
So would there be any difficulty in maneuvering between the proposed garage, the existing structure, the hedge? I mean, I'm assuming Spark, someone addressed any issues with fire safety coming in from the rear of the property, did they?
No fire issues were raised, and I believe a representative from the fire department was there.
Okay, thank you. So I guess my question is, there doesn't appear to be anything that would impede someone gaining access, if necessary, from the rear of the property?
I see what you're saying. No.
Okay. And because of the fact that this will be a two-car garage instead of a one-car garage, there will be a new slab and everything like that for it, I'm assuming everything will be taken out from the existing--
Yes.
Is there anyone else here this evening wishing to speak to us on this matter? Seeing no one, at this point, we will close the record, begin our deliberation, and make our determination. General thoughts, it appears that everyone seems to be pretty much in agreement that--
It's a nice-looking garage.
It's a tiny lot. There's not a lot you can do with it to be able to fit two cars in. The minimum, I think you could even get a garage probably for two cars, would be 20, and I don't know that you're even able to do much with that. So -- and we still aren't going to get our setbacks the way we are.
Right. And that's awful parking right around there, too.
Right.
So get a couple cars off the street is probably a good thing.
My only concern would be, you know, access to the rear of the property, but if that didn't seem to be addressed by fire safety, and from the testimony, it sounds like you would be able to, if necessary, gain access to the rear of the property. I really don't see any problem with this.
Agreed.
With that, we have a set of standards that we have to find in agreement with in order to make an approval. So we're going to go through those standards very quickly for this particular property. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. The fact that the neighbors to the north and the south are in agreement with the proposed plan and feel that it does not impede on any of their property rights or any of their concerns, I feel the standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. One of the things that the zoning ordinance tries to do is to provide off-street parking where possible to help alleviate the parking condition that occurs on many streets. As one of the members noted earlier, this is a congested and crowded area, so the ability to remove two cars from the street definitely keeps with that. So I feel that that standard has been met. The alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. The fact that the property is only 25 feet wide, any sort of a garage would probably require some sort of a variation, even if it were not this, but that would then create problems on trying to actually park two cars in a garage. So I feel that this standard has been met. The property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were carried out. Again, the property being so, so narrow creates the issue that we're addressing here, and the board doesn't really see any way around that we can't make the lot wider. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. Again, we feel this standard has been met. The fact that there probably will be some increase in value, I don't think, is what's driving the fact that this property needs to have garage. It sounds like the condition of the existing garage needs some work, and if they're going to replace it, it makes sense to do a two-car garage. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Again, with the fact that the property is narrow, is not something that the homeowner has created, so this standard has been met. Number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the zoning board. Again, the most we could probably do would be to get down to a 20-foot garage, which just is going to make it much harder for actually parking cars and getting in and out of cars in the property, and still doesn't get us down below where we need to be. And also, I would note that because of the fact that the property owner is willing to remove some of the decking in order to get us below the impervious surface, which is one of the things that we quite often are concerned with on these small lots, I would say that this standard has been met as well. Therefore, we have gone through the standards, and they appear to be met. So with that, I will ask if there is a motion.
I move that in CBA case 13ZMJV-0098, 1231 Hinman Avenue, that we grant major zoning relief to construct a two-car detached garage with a building lot coverage of 36.3% and a north side yard setback of 1.5 and a south side yard setback of 1.5 feet, with the condition that the project be in compliance with all the testimony and documents presented this evening.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Therefore, we have four affirmative votes, so the motion is carried. Good luck with your project. The second matter on the agenda this evening is 419 Greenwood. I'll ask to have that read into the record, please.
Paul Janicki, architect, applies for major zoning relief to construct one open parking space and a one-and-a-half-car detached garage. The applicant requests a building lot coverage of 42.6% where a maximum 30% is allowed, zoning code section 6827, and where previous zoning relief was granted for a maximum 39.7% building lot coverage, case number 10ZMJV0031. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included for the record are variance application submitted September 5th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plat of survey dated July 29th, 2013, site plan, elevations, zoning map of property, image of property, Historic Preservation Commission draft meeting minutes excerpt from August 28th, 2013, certificate of appropriateness, and Spark meeting minutes of October 2nd, 2013. I'd also note that this is a somewhat unique case, and that the building lot coverage request is due to the one-and-a-half-car detached garage as well as the open parking, because the zoning ordinance requires that any required open parking space count as 200 square feet of building lot coverage.
I had a question on this I meant to ask you before we got started. With this being open parking, are we actually the determining body in this case, or are we recommending to city council?
We are the determining body because the request is for building lot coverage. So the building lot coverage is due to, depending on how you look at it, both the open parking and the detached garage. So if you didn't have the open parking, but you still -- you had a two-car garage, you would still need the building lot coverage variance.
At this point, I would swear in anybody who wishes to speak to us on this matter. If you'd raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth throughout the course of these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you. If you could please state your name and address for us.
My name is Paul Janicki with Paul Janicki Architects. I'm representing the owner. My address is 1718 Sherman in Evanston. That's my office address.
If you would just tell us about your project, please.
Sure, of course. We were here a few years ago as part of a larger renovation that we did on this Arch and Crafts house, and which we ended up winning a preservation award for, but at the time, the owner didn't have really enough capital to kind of invest in a new garage. So we had the garage approved by the commission, and when we went for variance in order to get the lot coverage relief, and that was granted, as you know. Now, a couple years later, they want to downsize. They don't want a full two-car garage. They want just a car and a half. So as we went through the process, we thought, from a zoning perspective, this is a good thing. Zoning is all about bulk and views and, you know, impact on neighborhoods, so we thought this is kind of a good move on our part, and then we'll provide, you know, paving, since they want a patio anyway, where they could park a second car, because there's a requirement to have a second car parked on the lot, even though it's a very small lot, that's the rule. And then, of course, when I met with zoning, I realized the 200-square-foot sort of penalty, wouldn't call it a penalty, but something that needs to be counted towards building lot coverage. So now we're actually making more building lot coverage when we were actually trying to reduce building lot coverage. So in essence, we are reducing hard building lot coverage, but we are, if you will, from a parliamentary point of view, we are actually adding more square footage. So the relief we were given last time, I think, was 39% of lot coverage, and now it's 42 because of the fact that even though we have a smaller footprint garage with also a smaller, you know, smaller footprint, lower roof, so we thought less impact zoning-wise visually, but there is this other parking pad that now counts against us, too. And that's why I'm here.
All right. I'm looking at the drawings, and unfortunately, I did not see any identifier on the drawing, but it appears to be a site roof plan.
This one?
That's--
You've got this one in your--
That's an old one.
This shows -- this shows, what I'm looking at on this one is the previously approved and the new--
Right, exactly.
Garage.
That's the previously approved, and this is the--
Okay. So it does appear that we are significantly decreasing from what was approved, the visual impact on the lot.
Exactly. Sightlines, everything else, light, ventilation, you know.
And the proposed parking pad will be accessed through an alley?
Through a gate in the alley, same as the garage, you know. Basically, side by side.
And basically, the parking pad is situated between the house itself and the proposed new, smaller garage.
Right, exactly. And one of the other reasons for having the smaller garage, as you can see on the site plan, the garage, the site is very tight.
Right.
Obviously, it was subdivided at one point, and there's very little light and ventilation and room between these structures, and that was the other thing that led us to believe a smaller structure would be better, you know, overall for the house and for just the livability of the using yards and light and ventilation.
And has this new proposal been discussed with the neighbors?
I can't say if they have or not. I haven't.
Okay.
I mean, it's been in public, it's in the public realm.
Right. We've done the public notice and everything.
Exactly.
But sometimes people talk to their neighbors, and they say their neighbors are in favor of it, or--
Right.
They very rarely tell us they're opposed to it.
There's a lot of people with pitchforks outside. Nothing like that.
Melissa, is this the 200 square feet? It counts the semi-permeable, the permeable pavers don't give it the credit, or because it's counted as building lot coverage, they don't get a 20% reduction?
For impermeable, it does, but not for building lot coverage, right?
Correct. But it is, it's building lot coverage, but it is permeable pavers.
Right.
Okay, correct. All right.
And Preservation did actually approve it two years ago, and then they have now approved, I don't know if you mentioned this already, they've now approved the new scheme as well.
Yeah, we have the certificate of appropriateness in our packet that states--
Okay, great.
That it was approved in September. Any additional questions from board members?
I'm just curious, in the garage, is it sort of a lofted space? It's pretty tall framing.
It's just like, you know, there'll be collar ties coming across to keep the roof from spreading, but I don't believe--
No habitable or storage?
No, 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 no. It's too shallow for that.
And it looks like the reason for a one-and-a-half-car garage instead of a one-car garage is to have some storage in the garage along--
Lawnmowers, you know, kids' stuff, potting, bench. They only have one car. They only use one car. They mostly park on the street, but in the wintertime, they would like a place to put it. The second spot, probably very rarely used, maybe for guests if there's too much, you know, parking on the street or something, or if they do ever buy a second car, but--
But they intend to use it quite often as a patio space instead of--
Yeah, kids will play out there and--
Parking area.
Exactly, yeah. They'll leave a blank, so it can be used, but kids will probably end up running around out there.
With that, is there anyone else who wishes to speak to us on this matter? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close the record and begin our deliberation. General thoughts, opinions?
Lovely, smaller garage.
It's all about lovely garages this evening.
It is.
Makes sense.
People are investing in the garage, it's great.
I mean, I would just say that I think it's, I mean, it's a smart use of it. It's really, it appears more to be a patio than anything else for most of their use, the fact that it is somewhat hidden between the two structures.
The alley.
It's off the alley. I don't see that this would really impede much on anyone's visual aesthetics or any of their property values or their enjoyment of their properties. Any other thoughts? If not, we will go through the standards. So you can sit down if you'd like.
Oh, thanks.
You do not have to stand, although I do this--
I was just getting comfy.
Thanks.
The standards, again, for the major variations. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties for the reasons that I had stated earlier about the fact that the garage itself seems to be getting smaller, and the addition of the parking pad, open parking space is located in between the two structures, does not seem to be really impeding on anyone else's views or use of their property, the fact that it also is able to be entranced only through the alley. Again, it's not something that people can see from the street, which has always been one of our concerns, so I believe that standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. As I stated in the previous case, one of the things the city is concerned about is making sure that if possible, cars are removed from the street and put into garages or off-street parking, preferably at the rear of properties. This seems to be a very good solution for that, so I feel that this standard also has been met. The alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Although we did not hear any particular testimony to the fact-- Although we did not hear any particular testimony to the fact, the lot is kind of a smallish lot in terms of depth, and therefore, there doesn't appear to be a lot of room. If this were a much deeper lot, right now, it's at 90, just under 100 feet. If this were a, a standard lot going back 125 or 150 feet, obviously, we would not have these types of issues. So I think that the particular size of this property does create a hardship, and therefore, I believe this standard has been met. The property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. The fact that the property owner tends to, or intends to use this property more so as a patio, but likes to have the option of having a second parking space if in the future they decide to get a second car, or if they have out-of-town guests and they need to have off-street parking. It appears that this, this really is, is a good way to solve that. And at the same time, one of the things that we're often concerned with is massing, and the fact that the garage itself is getting smaller and taking up less space actually is a good thing as far as we're concerned. But the, the owner would still have the ability to park two cars on their property. So I believe this standard has been met as well. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income. Again, because of the fact that this is a, a lot in which most people would expect to have ability to park two different vehicles, even with the existing structures that are there, it creates a very difficult way to put two cars onto the property. I don't feel that by allowing them to put two cars on the property, there's any additional income that's going to be coming from this property. So therefore, I believe this standard has been met. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Again, one of the main reasons that we're here on this particular property is because it is a, a shallow property, and therefore, does not have the depth that most often one would have for putting a detached garage behind it and being able to have a two-car garage as well as some yard space, which doesn't appear to be available on this particular property. So I feel standard number six has been met. Number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the ZBA. Again, the, the garage itself is getting smaller. They have not decided to come back and ask us to approve a two-car garage, as well as trying to put additional parking on the property. The fact that they would have some ability to store personal items such as lawn mowers, bicycles, garden equipment, this sort of stuff in the garage, makes sense that it would be a one-and-a-half car garage. And as we have stated before, the fact that this really is, is kind of used as a patio, or intended to be used as a patio, more so than a true parking space on the whole, I feel that this standard has been met as well. So that, again, goes through the standards. If there is no further discussion, is there a motion?
Just want to do one for fun?
Okay. I move that in the case of zoning 13ZMJV-0096, 419 Greenwood Street, that we grant major zoning relief to construct a 1.5-car detached garage and one open parking space, and with a building lot coverage of 42.6%, where a maximum 30% is allowed, with the condition that the project comply with all testimony and documents presented here to us tonight.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Therefore, all those in favor of the approval of 419 Greenwood Street, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none opposed and all four approving, the matter is approved, and good luck with your project. Thank you. The next case on our docket was for 140 Chicago Avenue, and there has been a request made to city staff that this matter be continued until our November 19th meeting. At this point, is there a motion to so continue it?
I move in the case of 140 Chicago Avenue that we continue the case until November, was it?
19th.
19th?
It has been moved. Is it a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of continuing the matter on 140 Chicago Avenue to our November 19th meeting, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Hearing none, it is so moved or so approved.
If I could just note that because the November 19th meeting will be at 7:00 PM, the case will be re-noticed to the public.
Okay. And that moves us on to our final case for this evening, 1111 Darrow Avenue. If we could read that into the record, please.
Harry and Erica Whitmore, property owners, apply for major zoning relief to construct a shed and four-foot and six-foot solid fence in the front yard. The applicants request to locate a shed in the front yard where sheds, accessory, accessory structures are not permitted in front yards. Zoning code section 6462D. A fence in the front yard where front yard fences are not permitted, zoning code section 6467F2A1, with 100% opacity where a maximum 70% opacity is allowed in a front yard, zoning code section 6467F2A2. Located in front of the front facade of the principal structure, zoning code section 6467F2C, with a maximum six-foot height where the maximum height of front yard fences is four feet, zoning code section 6467F3. The zoning board of appeals is the determining body for this case. Documents included as part of the record are variance applications submitted September 13th, 2013, standards form, zoning analysis, plot of survey and site plan, shed and fence images, image of property, aerial view of property, zoning map of property, and spark meeting minutes of September 25th, 2013.
Thank you. If I could have anybody who thinks they may speak to us tonight on this particular project sworn in at this point, if you please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you give throughout the course of these proceedings will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you could please state your name and address for us?
Sure. My name's Harry Whitmore, and I'm at 1111 Darrow.
Okay. And then if you could just please tell us about your project?
Sure. So we also have kind of a unique situation in the sense that our principal residence, the house is set against the alley. It's an old Luxembourg cottage, and the house was that way when we purchased it, making our only existing lawn technically a front lawn. Thus, any fence that we would install for the property is in our front lawn and necessitates a variance.
Is there any sort of a fence already in front of the property, or shrubbery, or anything that separates it from the street view?
Currently, no.
And right now, you're, you're requesting that the fence be aligned with the setback of the adjacent homes?
Correct.
And it appears that the... I'm sorry, did you say the fence or the shed? It was...
The fence.
The fence. So the shed then is being set back, it looks like maybe four to, around four feet from the fence?
Yes.
So it actually would be, how far back is that from the property line itself?
It's approximately 30 feet back from the property line. And again, flush with the two houses on either side. So the front fence is only four foot, and then the fence on the side is the six-foot fence that's on the south side, which is the backyard of our neighbors, but our front yard.
So will your mail be delivered to the fence?
That's, yeah, that's one of the ideas. I should have gotten testimony from the mailman, maybe, that his job would be easier.
As long as you have the mailbox at a US postal height, it'll be okay.
Ah, okay, good point.
So the six-foot fence is, is going to be, even though for this lot, it's a six-foot side-front yard fence, it's only running where in any other normal, normally configured lot, it would be backyard fence.
Correct.
And would therefore be compliant, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Is it backyard or is it side yard? Because 1109 Darrow
It's a house.
Would be, that would be the side of the house, wouldn't it?
Where the six-foot fence is located, so long as it was at least three feet back from the front facade of the house, then starting at that point and moving towards the rear, the fence could be six feet in height.
And there, is, is there an existing shed on, on the property?
Yeah.
And your plan is to remove that one?
Well, move it. We were...
You're moving the shed to the new location?
Yeah.
Closer to the street?
Closer to the street, yeah.
So what you're doing is kind of removing it from about the halfway point from the street to the front of the house, and you're now wanting to put a four-foot fence about 27 to 30 feet from the property line, and then put the shed there. So in reality, it would be like putting a shed up against a fence at the backyard in most homes. So you have more usable space as opposed to a shed in the middle of the yard.
Yes.
And you will be pouring a new pad for the shed?
Yeah.
Does it currently sit on a concrete pad?
No, it doesn't currently, which bothers us. And part of the idea is to create a, a street presence, because currently, we do get a lot of people kind of, "Where is your house?" and peering back. And we think that with some landscaping in front, once the fence is done, that'll help us do that.
So the shrubs are going? Because Google Earth images has shrubs in front of your...
Yeah, yeah, those are, those are gone.
And the intent is to keep the same concrete walk as it exists along the, what side of the...
No, it's actually to remove that as well. And we haven't really made up our mind what, where our walk will be.
But you will continue to have a similar walk, whether it is along this property line, down the center, or off to the other side
Yes.
of the property. There still will be some sort of a concrete walk running the depth of the property, from the front sidewalk, obviously, to your home.
Yes, yes, eventually, yeah.
And then it also appears that there will be some landscaping done to the front of the home. Is I reading that correctly?
Uh, yeah, that's the idea. We also do have a new dog who would love a fenced-in space to run.
Are there any additional questions from the board? Seeing none, is there anybody else who wishes to speak to us on this matter this evening? Seeing no one. We will go ahead and close the record and begin our deliberation. I mean, I think if you, if you hear this case without seeing the particulars, it sounds very different than when you see the particulars to it.
Exactly, yeah.
I mean, when I initially was perusing what's coming up, and I'm like, shed and fence in the front yard, not really a good idea. But in realizing that the, the, the structure sits all the way on the rear property line almost of a, of a property that is 160-plus feet deep, it makes sense that somebody would try to convert this front lawn into what most people would be using as a, as a back lawn.
Yeah, I mean, I totally understand the reasoning and agree with the fencing. I guess, just from personal preference and just an urban gesture, I'm not so in favor of the shed up against the, the street side. I would be an advocate for having it not in the middle as it's currently, but someplace closer to the house. But I can understand the logic behind it being by the fence if we treat it as a rear yard sort of situation. But from an urban gesture, it's less appealing.
I think that one of the things that, that we, we may consider would be to sort of soften screen somewhat the shed from the street view with some level of landscaping bushes, something so it's not a hard facade facing the street. I mean, I can understand, again, wanting to move the shed out of
It all makes sense.
the middle of the lawn. The fact that it's not going to be sticking out beyond what the, the homes are that are there, I mean, they're basically treating the front yard setback as still being the front yard setback that we have of 27 feet. It's just that they want to enclose that space and make more use of it.
Yeah. It does help that sort of aesthetic issue that the four-foot fence is planned to be solid. It'll sort of hide the shed a little bit more, too, as opposed to, you know, picket or something.
Again, I would think that, I mean, having that, that front space in front of the, the fence is the perfect place for landscaping to help soften the look from the street. It also would give some level of privacy that a four-foot fence would not necessarily provide.
Yeah, I totally agree with the screening, and I would also want to stipulate that I wouldn't want somebody else to, you know, this property gets sold, somebody comes back and wants to make a bigger, more permanent, larger shed in the front. Although, I guess it could be a house. So then it's weird. Then we're talking about adding a garage in the front of the house, kind of thing.
Well, again, because of the, the, the amount of space that the residence takes up on the, the backside, there really isn't a way to get any sort of garage or parking up into the
Right.
front yard
Right.
without great difficulty, if even at all possible. Any other discussion? If there is none, we will, once again, go through our standards that we must find in order to approve any requested variations on the particular property. Number one, the requested variation will not have a substantial adverse impact on the use, enjoyment, or property values of adjoining properties. We have not heard any sort of testimony that would lead us to believe that. A large portion of this front yard is technically rear yard on neighboring properties. And therefore, it's, it's really almost like two backyards abutting in an average situation. So I feel this standard has been met. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. Number two, the requested variation is in keeping with the intent of the zoning ordinance. I would say that the, one of the intents of the zoning ordinance is to allow people to enjoy their properties and to have some level of usable privacy. This particular lot, because of the way that it is configured with the, the residential structure at the rear, really creates some sort of a difficulty in doing that. But I believe that the approach that's being presented to us is a, a nice solution, which takes into consideration the properties around it as well as the uniqueness of this property. So I feel this standard has been met. Number three, the alleged hardship or practical difficulty is peculiar to the property. Again, it's not too often that we see properties that are situated along the rear alley with a front lawn that is, I would say, probably about 100 and, over 100 feet deep. So this is definitely a unique, a unique property in the city and therefore, this standard has been met. Number four, the property owner would suffer a particular hardship or practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the strict letter of the regulations were to be carried out. Again, because the only usable lawn and outdoor space that is provided on this particular property is in the front lawn and the front lawn is also excessively large, it appears that it would be putting an undue hardship to ask these people to not be able to use this space in the way that they would like and the way that most people are able to use the outdoor space on their property. So I feel this standard has been met. Number five, the purpose of the variation is not based exclusively upon a desire to extract additional income from the property. Again, there doesn't appear to be anything here which is really changing in terms of adding any additional structure. As we've heard, the shed will merely be relocated as opposed to being something larger built in its place. And the fencing is a logical solution that most people would expect to have in a property. So nothing here seems to be out of the ordinary that would increase property values exponentially. Number six, the alleged difficulty or hardship has not been created by any person having an interest in the property. Again, the structure was built this way quite a while ago. The current owners have purchased this property in the existing condition and so I believe this standard has been met. Number seven, the requested variation requires the least deviation from the applicable regulation among the feasible options identified before the ZBA. This is, again, a unique property. There's not a lot that one can do in terms of being able to make this space usable that isn't going to require some sort of zoning relief request from us. But again, it's, it's allowing people to, to sort of use their front lawn as their rear lawn in this particular case because it is such a unique situation. So I feel that that standard has been met as well. With that, we've gone through the standards. I know we have discussed the possibility of including a condition or two in terms of screening, helping to soften the facade from the, from the street. So anything like that would, would be entertained as well as part of the motion, I'm sure.
Want to chat up? Do we want to chat a little tiny bit about what we're, what we're looking for? Specifics in that sort of condition or?
Landscaping is really what we're saying.
I mean, I think it's really just about landscaping to help soften that appearance from the street.
Okay. Height requirements, anything like that?
In terms of landscaping, height requirements? I don't think there's anything that's necessary...
Well, and you have to cover the, to soften the shed.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, a two-foot plant in front of a shed is not really going to make an impact
Right.
On anything, but...
Tall grasses.
Okay, appropriate. I'll say appropriate. Is that what I'm going to say? That's what I'm going to say?
I think that would be fine. I'm sure staff doesn't like a vague word like appropriate.
Appropriately, equally or sufficiently tall to cover, but we don't want to cover the shed.
That means you're making them plant 12-foot-high trees.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, we've...
We've done it before.
We have done it before. I mean, I know there was lots of discussion just recently about shrubs in the city of Evanston and front lawns, in which six feet was a number that was produced by staff, not necessarily our current staff here, but city staff as a whole. I think something that is five to six feet high
Let's give it that height.
Is appropriate. It helps soften the shed. Obviously, something in front of the fence, we wouldn't necessarily, they wouldn't necessarily need to go higher than the fence. But I think our main concern really is softening the impact of the, of the shed somewhat. So after that discussion, is there a motion?
Sure. I move in the case of ZBA 13Z MJV-0099, 1111 Darrow Avenue, that we grant variation for the property owners to construct a shed and some amount of four-foot and six-foot solid fence in the front yard. With fence in the front yard where front yard, front yard fences are not permitted and with 100% opacity where a maximum 70% opacity is allowed in a front yard and with a maximum six-foot height where the maximum height of front yard fencing is four foot with the following two conditions attached. First, that the project will proceed in compliance with all testimony and documents presented here to us tonight. And second, that appropriate landscaping will be placed in front of the four-foot fence with a height of five to six feet in order to soften the street-side appearance of the shed that will be located in close proximity to that four-foot fence.
Before I ask for a second on that, I want to clarify a couple of points. Number one, we, the applicant is not asking to construct a shed, but to relocate a shed?
Yes.
I would make that point. So as we are not opening up anything much larger than what has been asked for?
Mm-hmm.
And I would also make the landscaping condition not necessarily in front of the four-foot fence to hide the shed because there appears to be property between the shed and the fence in which landscaping may be more appropriately placed.
Oh, so we are not saying that we want it in front of the fence?
I don't think we want something taller than the fence necessarily in front of the fence.
Got it.
The idea is to hide
Got it.
The shed or soften the appearance of the shed as opposed to necessarily obscuring the fence that it would be shorter than the
Got it. Okay, got it. I amend my motion to grant zoning variation to relocate a shed and I amend the condition to state that the landscaping would be located in front of the shed.
All right. With that, is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the, of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Hearing none opposed. And for the, the motion has passed and the project has been approved. So good luck with your project. Noting that that is the last item on our agenda, are there any announcements?
Just to announce that given our current Chair Lori Summers' departure, the new chair that has been named by the mayor is Matt Rogers. Also, along those lines, previously, Lori was the Economic Development Committee Liaison. That is up to you guys if you'd like to make a motion regarding that.
I'm willing, I mean, I've kind of been asked by my alderman to serve on that committee in my new role, so I am more than willing to do that unless someone else has a particular interest in it. So seeing none, I will be glad to serve on that committee. My, have a question for you on that as well. Do we not also have a seat on some other committee? It's a non-voting thing, but I thought we had seats on two committees and that may have changed. But I know when I started seven years ago...
I remember that too.
That was the case.
Oh, you guys don't have to stay if you don't want to. But you can stay if you want to.
Would that have been Plan Commission, do you think?
It may have been Plan Commission or, I mean, that would, that would be a body that would make sense, but I don't know for sure.
Wasn't it even like, wait a minute, so what's the one you're sitting on, you're going to sit on right now?
Economic Development Committee.
I feel like it was the Rules Committee of the Planning Commission or something like that.
The zoning committee of the Plan Commission?
Maybe it was the zoning committee of the Planning Commission.
And I know it was a non-voting position, so I don't think we have filled it. So if nobody has really
I'll look into it and see.
Ask about, where is the ZBA member from?
Honestly, it would probably make sense. The zoning committee typically looks at text, zoning text amendments and map amendments. So it would be logical. I'll look into it.
All right.
Are you volunteering for that one?
That one I'm not so fond of, but I know there are several people who are in planning and architecture who I think would be excellent for such a position.
It's a very interesting committee.
No, I actually wouldn't mind.
I wouldn't mind either, actually, so that's fine, yeah.
So if, if we can find out if indeed that is something we have or are expected to fulfill, we will do that as well.
Do we have a motion regarding the Economic Development Committee Liaison?
Yes. Regarding the motion to nominate Matt Rogers for the Economic Commission, is that what it's called?
Development Committee.
What is it?
Economic Development Committee.
Economic Development Committee. That we approve him.
It has been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Therefore, I will be happy to serve in such a capacity.
How often do you have to show up for that?
It's once a month.
Last thing to note is that for the remainder of 2013, the Zoning Board of Appeals will be meeting at 7:00 PM.
Eight thirty?
7:00 PM with full agendas at every meeting.
Well, Matt's running a tight ship here.
Yeah, I was, I wanted to note that the speaking cadence is highly appreciated.
Yes.
Keep, just keep talking, buddy. Just keep talking.
I will do that. It's been hard to shut me up. So with that, no other matters before us this evening. We stand adjourned.